At this time, I am calling to order on this Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019, Granby Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting. I would ask at this time for all of our members of the ZBA to please announce their name for public record. And just as a side note, at this time, all members in here and everyone in the audience will be audio and visually recorded. We do have our Granby camera that is doing it and also personal. So just so that you are aware that you are being recorded at this time. Thank you. If I may have the board members please announce themselves.
Anthony Huertas, member.
Jeremy Carrier, Chair. Ron Herup, Member.
Kathleen Veron, Vice Chair.
Brian O'Toole, Town Council.
Thank you. At this time, just want to remind everybody that this is starting off as a meeting. It is the ZBA's challenge tonight to make sure that ample amount of people are heard for both sides opposed and for what we're here for this evening. I would ask everybody to please be respectful to each other. There will be no talking to each other within the audience. Please, all questions and answers, please direct it directly towards the board. We will then decide if there is ample time for another rebuttal. We will try to keep this as organized as possible. If you are asked at a certain point to please stop talking or interrupting, that will be a one-time type of a warning for that. You may be asked to leave completely at that point of your disturbance to this setting. Okay? So just to make sure everybody is clear of that. Okay. At this time, our first order of business for the meeting is to actually open up a hearing. This hearing by the Granby Board of Appeals is a public hearing that was originally scheduled for January 8th and has been moved to this evening. To consider the petition of the Granby Bow and Gun Club Incorporated seeking a special permit applicable to Section 6 Administration and Enforcement 6.21 Special Permit Granting Authorities Regarding an Existing Constructed Shooter Shed Approximately 10 Foot by 90 Foot Located in the Lower Firing Area and a Proposed New Construction of a 50 Foot by 16 Foot Shooter Shed with Sound Suppression Material to Mitigate Noise on Upper Firing Area to be Located at 85 Chicopee Street, Granby, Massachusetts, Known As Map 15 Parcels C-3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, 11, and 12. At this time, I would like to hear from someone speaking for the Granby Bow and Gun Club. Do you have a representative that would like to speak for them? Yes, sir. And could you please state your name?
Good evening. My name's Justin Rapelson. I'm one of two council for the Granby Bow and Gun Club along with Martha Dean.
If council would like to come forward, you'll be able to hear. It will not project, but you will be on record. So you do have to project as much as you can to the audience.
I may have one second to confer.
Sir?
Good evening, Members of the Board, Chair, Town Council. This is an application for two special permits which we've consolidated for the purposes of streamlining this permit application. The first permit of which is the construction and use of the shed along the upper firing area of the Granby Bow and Gun Club's property located at 85 Chicopee Street. The second is a for the use of an already constructed shooter shed, which will really only require some basic maintenance to upkeep the already constructed shed. And that's located in the lower firing area of the range. Just as a precursor to put it out there for the board, there was a decision made in 2017 that the club is a pre-existing lawful, pre-existing non-conforming use or grandfathered use. And the club has essentially been deemed a shooting club or a fire, excuse me, a firing range for the purposes of this hearing. The first issue that we want to address specifically is relating to any testimony made by any opponents to the application and anyone for the application as well. Your job as the zoning board of appeals is to narrowly construe the law and to apply that law to the facts and to either grant or deny a special permit based on your analysis of Chapter 48 and the Granby bylaws, the town bylaws. Specifically, we're dealing with 6.27, which addresses special permits. And the reason I bring this up is because we just want to make sure that the board limits testimony to the specific issue at hand, which is the either the grants or the denial of these two consolidated special permits. Any sort of testimony regarding any other issues that are unrelated to this matter, we're asking that you limit that testimony. So let's streamline this because the club's intention is to only speak regarding these two applications and to only speak regarding the sheds themselves. We're not going to be going into any other details that have come up in the past, any sort of complaints that have come up in the past that have been addressed by various opponents and neighbors. So today, our job is really just to explain to you why we believe that you should grant the special permit and why we think that it complies with Section 6.27 and 48. So I'll go right into it. The zoning board's responsibility specifically and the for a special permit to be granted, I quote Mass General Law's 48, Section 9. "For a special permit to be issued, the proposed use or structure must be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance or bylaw and shall be subject to general or specific provisions set forth therein. And such permits may also impose conditions, safeguards, and limitations on time or use." So we have a two-tiered statute there where we have to comply with being in harmony with the purpose of the bylaw. And if the permit is granted or you're considering granting the permit, you're then able to consider what conditions or safeguards or limitations can be enacted. So I'll dive right into the specifics bylaw, which is 6.27. And we're really looking at essentially every single one of those subdivisions of the bylaw. And in some, they are the suit of whether it's a suitable location in the neighborhood, if it's reasonably compatible with the character and scale of other uses permitted, issues of whether there's nuisance by reason of unacceptable level of air or water pollution, excessive noise or flagrant structures, vehicular circulation, inadequate facilities, compliance with environmental performance standards, compliance with special permit criteria, traffic, pedestrian safety, and groundwater issues during and after construction, disposal of sewage or other wastes, and putting up some sort of vegetative buffer. So that's really what we're going to be addressing today in front of you. And I would like to call a witness to the stand or to the in front of you to address some of these elements specifically.
Can I have a lot of that this time?
Marshall.
Sure.
Could you please identify yourself for the record?
My name's Marshall Johnson. I'm currently the Vice President of the Granby Bow and Gun Club.
And do you reside in Granby?
No, sir.
Okay. But you're a you're how long have you been a member of the club?
Five, almost five years.
And what are your specific tasks at the club?
I kind of thought this would actually be more of a presentation of something that is already set forth because all questions and things really should be brought forth by the board and directed towards the board. I'm not really sure.
I'm just trying to establish his I'm trying to establish his what he does with the club.
Is this going to be a whole prompt?
No, no, no. It's just just basic identification information.
Okay.
I help with day-to-day operations of the range and internal stuff with the club.
Okay. And so you're familiar with the day-to-day tasks of the club?
Absolutely.
And you're familiar with the application?
Absolutely.
Okay. Can you just talk about the neighborhood in which the club is located?
Rural neighborhood.
How long?
I don't know how to really explain it.
How long has the club been?
Seventy-two years.
Seventy-two years. And the club is a lawful, pre-existing, non-conforming use?
Correct.
And you have you're not proposing any changes to the use of the club with this special permit application?
No.
Okay. And what specifically are these shooter sheds going to be?
Well, the lower one that's already built, it's a wood construction, truss roof on a concrete pad. The new top, the new structure up top will be a of steel construction on top of another concrete pad. It'll have steel walls, steel roof with garage doors on one side and the walls and the ceiling inside that shed would be covered with a certain a certaintyed, high-density fiberglass insulation board as sound mitigation.
What does that mean?
It's a real high-density thing in panel, which will have on all the walls and ceilings inside to catch some of the sound waves.
Now, the create the construction of this shed, is this something you're doing to to help address some of the concerns with the neighbors?
Well, yes. You know, I think, you know, most of the, you know, not all the shooting in the place is going to be done inside, but whatever's done inside is definitely going to be catching. The sound is going to be caught inside the building for the most part. Nothing's perfect.
And how long do you anticipate construction's going to last?
Well, you know, construction projects goes, hopefully things go smoothly and it can be done in a in a summer, I hope.
You mean this summer?
Hopefully.
And you still have to procure materials for?
Yep, yep. We still have to have the building. The building will actually be delivered as a package.
So you've contracted someone to construct this building?
Yes.
And what's that person's name?
The name of the company is in the application that we submitted. I can't remember it offhand.
Now, this, do you have the requisite funds to be able to start this?
Yes.
As soon as possible?
Yep.
And what's this going to do in regards to safety on the range?
Well, giving people a nice sturdy platform to shoot off of is always a bonus.
Why?
You know, sure-footedness and, you know, better than being on the ground in the mud.
So it's your testimony that the construction of this is going to enhance safety on the range?
It should, yes.
May I ask you a question, sir?
Sure.
So currently where you are proposing to have this shed built, is there not a concrete pad there right now?
Correct, yeah.
So why would you be shooting in the mud if you have a concrete pad there?
It was just a metaphor.
Well, it's not a metaphor. You're using that as a reasoning or why you would like to build this shed is for better sure-footedness.
Okay.
You have a pad at this time, so you're not on loose gravel, you're not in the mud. I just want to comprehend.
Okay.
If you're using that as a defense.
I got you. I mean, you know, along with this shed goes a little bit of infrastructure inside the building too, like where you have safe tables, like where you can put, you know, rifles or handguns or whatever you're going to shoot like beforehand. So you'll have staging areas, you'll have a hotline, a cold line. It's just going to add to the whole process of a nice, safe environment. You know, where you come in from the back, you'll come in through a door from the back. We have plans that you can have shelves in the back that stuff can be stored on, where you have, you know, loaded chamber indicators in your rifle or even the bolts out until you get on the line. And when you get on the line, then you can go ahead and go. It's just part of the whole system of safety, I should say. Is that a better answer?
I think that's much better than what was given. So that's why I wanted to understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the concrete pad obviously wouldn't mitigate sound in any way. And the structure, that's part of the design is to mitigate sound.
Right.
Now, are you are you familiar with what the hours of operation are going to be?
Yeah. The since we have an upper and a lower range, the shooting times are split. Where is it? Yeah. Yeah. See, we do the lower firing area Tuesdays and Thursdays, 8:00 AM till half an hour after. Shooter shed two, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, half an hour after sunset, Saturday and Sunday. We split the day so that some people don't shoot longer distances, they can still have access to the lower range and shoot whatever. And then we mix it up and then open it up for people that want to shoot up top.
Now, when you say the the upper ranges, are you referring to firing lines?
Yeah, the upper firing.
So this is all part of the same range?
Yes.
Okay. And now you do this tiered system so that there's no overlap and there's no safety concerns that arise on the range?
Correct.
And?
Nobody wants to be shooting over anybody else's head.
Yes. And that that's part of the rationale behind the hour structure.
Right.
Now?
So in a sense, that upper area only kind of gets used half the time.
And this?
When the range is open.
During the actual construction, I'll kind of briefly go over each of the elements that we need to satisfy within 6.27. I already talked about the the location of the neighborhood and the the issue of water pollution and air pollution. There's there's going to be no effect to?
No, sir.
This is you're essentially you're just providing a structure. You're not changing any way that you're firing your firearms on the range.
No.
And you're actually you're in compliance with the Wetlands Protection Act, correct?
Correct.
And that's part of the one of the requirements for the ZBA is to is to be in compliance with the Wetlands Protection Act. And how are you in compliance?
In our range, what's this? Sorry. A little nervous. The our range.
Environmental stewardship plan.
Thank you. Environmental stewardship plan that we put in, we have been doing testing and stuff like that of the soil. And we've applied lime a couple of times to keep our pH levels where they want to be so that we, you know, mitigate any kind of lead transfer through the groundwater or anything like that. And where we're at like naturally with our samples is right like on the edge of where it doesn't go anywhere anyway. So we're good in that sense.
Ultimately, though, you're in compliance with all?
Correct.
DEP standards and regulations.
Right.
And you're continuing to actively keep that environmental stewardship plan updated.
Correct.
Now, in regarding parking and vehicular access, what is the parking situation like right now?
We have plenty of parking.
Okay. And where people where do people park generally?
We have parking up the road, a few spots already up top where you can park. People, some people pull up along the road, some people park down below.
Now, none of this is in the firing line, correct?
No.
Okay. So everyone is isolated, the vehicles are in a safe location.
Correct.
And do you anticipate parking becoming a problem with the construction of these sheds?
Nope.
And is this paved or is it gravel?
Gravel.
Okay. Now, regarding Section 5 of the bylaw, Section 5 talks about lighting, stormwater runoff, erosion control, screening, and buffer zones. Is there's no additional lighting being proposed?
No.
And what kind of is there going to be any sort of surface water runoff or any issues during or after construction?
No, it shouldn't be an issue.
Can I ask you a question about the no proposed lighting? If we're taking this right, you're talking about you actually will do shooting from inside the shed, correct?
Yes.
At times?
Yes.
How does it enhance the safety, and I just want to grasp this, of a shooter if you are not lit? You're in an area that's, I'm assuming, going to be enclosed at least over the top of two walls.
Yeah.
Back doors open and front doors open.
There are 10-foot garage doors in the front, so when you open up, the muzzle's going to be outside of the building. You are going to be pretty much in the light.
Pretty much, depending on?
Well, I mean?
Time of year, sunrise, sunset.
Well, we're not going to be shooting before sunrise.
Correct.
And we're not going to be shooting in the dark.
But I'm saying the sun is at different positions or?
Right. But I, you know, during the day, I have no no anticipated worry about how the light's going to be, you know, with the doors open.
Now, is there going to be any issues with with managing soil around the proposed construction?
No.
And the you're going to be employing all the best management practices for sediment control and?
Correct.
Wetlands and are you going to use hay bales?
Waddles is what we currently use, yeah.
Waddles?
The hay waddles.
And what what function does that serve?
It acts as a water runoff diverter to keep anything, any silt or anything from running down.
Now, is that going to be employed just during construction or afterwards?
Well, the the on the on the upper line, the only thing that I think we're going to be doing is adding six feet by 50 of concrete. So I don't even know that we have to excavate all that much to get that done.
So you're going to?
Due to the existing elevations of everything, it could probably just be done right on top where we're not going to be excavating any loose soil.
Okay.
Or if it would, it would be minimal scraping.
And what about dust control? Is there any are there going to be any issues?
No, sir.
And part of the rationale for that, Board, is the dust control won't be necessary because the project's not going to be within 200 feet of an occupied residence, which is part of the bylaw requirements. And then all other erosion requirements suggested by the board will be complied with if necessary?
Yep.
And just touching on traffic congestion and pedestrian safety, we talked briefly about the staggered start times for ensuring that people on the range were protected. And you don't anticipate any traffic changes other than during events?
No.
And what's the current buffer zone? What does it look like around that area? And what do you are you proposing any additions to the buffer zone?
Right now, it's basically woodlot surrounding the area.
When you say the area, where specifically?
Well, up on the on the upper area, there's trees to the right to the to the south, to the west, and then a little bit, just a very little bit to the north, and then it goes down into the other.
And you're not proposing any cutting of trees or any cutting of anything?
No.
I'd like a little bit more specifics on how much footage do you have from your actual, say, the end of 1,000-yard range to the next property boundary? For your backstops or anything, how far set back are you from them? How far away from a property line are you?
You mean from the upper firing line on?
Well, this is what this is what I'm having a little, and again, and I'll get into that more later. You're saying that you're using an upper firing range and a lower, a lower and an upper pad?
Yep.
At one point, you said you're firing down the same range. That's why you're staggering start-finish times, correct?
Yeah, it's all part of the same range.
Okay. So if it's all part of the same range, why do we keep referring to the upper or the lower if the backstop is the same at the end of the range? It is, correct? If you're shooting down the same range, the end of the range is a fixed position, no matter if you're shooting from a lower pad or an upper pad, you're saying at the same direction with the same amount of distance to the property behind it, correct?
Well, the?
Because you keep mentioning that and you're you're saying that the distance is very?
Well, no, I mean, you can shoot at multiple targets from either one.
Okay.
So?
I'm trying to find out, because you're you're saying that the buffer zone and I'm just trying to get distance.
You meant the buffer zone around the building.
So you're talking, you know, I'm talking, you just talked about the end of the range. So I'm just trying to figure out what the distance between the end of your actual range that's been excavated or cleared, what you have for a berm, what do you have from that point to the next person's property line?
Well, generally?
Saying it's surrounded by some woods.
Generally speaking, the the club's been utilizing the entire range from day one of their existence. So, I mean, if you're referring to targets that have been placed there, I don't know, targets are variable. They they change. There's a lot of variability with targets. So when you say where is the end, I mean, they use their they use their property.
The last time that we've seen one was very, very close to the end of it. What I want to know is, because you didn't want to go back into history, I don't want to either.
Just irrelevant, frankly.
I'm looking what's there now. Okay. Well, it is relevant for noise or buffer zone. You know, so I'm just asking what you have there, because you're talking about a buffer zone. And you're talking about trees not being taken down. We're looking at existing, correct? We're looking at the existing, what's here now.
You're so let's let let me just try to understand this. You're speaking about the?
In your argument, you were talking about buffer zones and not clearing more property in it. We're looking at what we're built, want you to get a building for right now.
Yes.
So I'm just trying to grasp the property. And I'm not familiar with the property.
Okay. So you?
Okay.
Boundaries?
That's what I'm asking for. One of the things that I was going to bring up later, but maybe you could answer now, was that for clear grasp of what is on the property currently, again, we're not going back six months from now or before now. We were looking for part of here is a full site plan and have topographicals. So I don't have any of that to look at for judging of what you have for trees, buffer zones, elevations.
We provided the site plan for the area where the construction is going to take place. So that's relating to the parcel, that one individual parcel. And the bylaws don't require us to provide information for parcels that aren't related to the application. So that that's part of it. And the other part of it is the exorbitant cost to procure a site plan for irrelevant parcels would be just way beyond the the club's ability, financial ability. So that's that's part of the rationale why the entire range hasn't been provided because, you know, we're talking tens of thousands of dollars that would have to go into getting a site plan other than the actual parcel where the buildings are being proposed.
So could you show me on here where parcels C-3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, 11, and 12 are?
Just make it clear that they're not at issue in this application. That's what I wanted to get clear. Well, we are trying to understand where?
That is what I have in mind as well, those.
That?
Or this is a different? You have a copy of the application?
Specifically, we're only we're only dealing with with one parcel with the application is the construction is on one parcel and the use is going to take place on that parcel.
And the use affects the entire property in downrange, correct? A bullet is going to come from that parcel?
Pre-existing use.
And enter into another one?
Well?
So this is the upper. I mean, we're looking at what you want the use for. And that was one of the arguments that you actually used to not have a full site plan that we were requesting under the zoning bylaws was that a homeowner would not need to provide that. A homeowner typically wouldn't be using 1,000 yards downrange. And I'm just trying to?
My co-council is going to? My, my co-counsel is going to address a little bit.
Chairman, we're going to divide up parts of this and help each other here. We do a lot of shooting range work, so we're, Justin's land use attorney, so we'll try to work together to answer your questions here. So the bylaws require information on the part, on the plot at issue. There are many plots here at this property. It's almost 300 acres, and we provided information just for the plot at issue. Both shooter sheds are on a single plot, and we didn't provide information for all of that plot because that plot goes on for, you know, almost 100 acres. So we understand from talking with the surveyor and from talking, who spoke with the building inspector, that it is not typical to ask an applicant who is applying for a shooter, for a shed, to provide information on a site that's, that's close to 100 acres. That information is needed for the immediate area around the shed, and that's the information that Attorney Rapelson was going into about the trees that exist, providing a buffer, visual, and, and somewhat-
Can we take a minute here? Everyone take 10 seconds.
Turn off phones and-
Turn off his office phones. So Attorney Rapelson was going into the, with the witness, was going into the trees that exist as a buffer on certain sides of the new proposed shooter shed, and I think that's where we left off, and we're just giving you a reason why we provided one, one parcel.
Everyone has them off now, correct? They do it on purpose. If you want to leave one of them off now.
At this time, I say that everyone must have their phones off so we're not interrupted again. Okay, so I will ask the officer to enforce that. If we have another phone go off, then he will be escorted out. Okay? Please. Thank you very much.
So we've just explained why we provided one parcel, information for one parcel and not for the entire parcel based on the surveyor's conversations with the building inspector on what's typically required where a parcel is as large as this particular individual parcel is, and again, it's one of many parcels on this property. And because it's, this one parcel doesn't have other buildings, that's why you don't have information on buildings like the clubhouse and the other parcels at issue here, because we are not dealing with a new or changed use. This is why we don't have information on targets or on shooting distances or anything regarding that, because shooting exists, it's a grandfathered use, and the only thing we're doing is proposing to use the existing shed and build a new shed to help mitigate some noise in, in the area.
I don't know if that's something that my legal counsel can shed a light on, but it seems to me that we are involving more than the one parcel as far as the use of that building, because again, you're, you're not just building that for storage, as say, a homeowner would only need to worry about that. And again, I understand the vastness of the club, but I think we need to look what it's being used for. You're not using it strictly for storage.
There's no new use, and there's no request for permission to use the site, or for any particular use, or for any change in use. There's no change in the use except that a shed will provide cover from the elements and provide some sound mitigation for the neighborhood.
And you did receive back the ZBA's decision that we were looking for the full site plan, that a waiver was not granted, correct?
It's cost prohibitive, as Attorney Rapelson said.
Okay. I'm sure that you are aware-
I don't think the Board truly comprehends just how expensive, even just that one small parcel is.
I'm just asking that one thing. You did ask for a waiver.
We did.
A hearing, a meeting was discussed, and-
It was denied, and we, we believe that it's not required per the customs of the town in accepting applications and reviewing them, and based on what we've learned from the building inspector, and we believe it's not required per, in, in connection with the exorbitant cost and information that's unnecessary, that has no relation to the actual building.
We're talking, we're applying for a, a building, a special permit for a building.
We have a question from the Board, and you can probably answer that in a minute.
What would have been helpful for me as a member of the Board is, I understand what you're saying, the expense, and we absolutely, the Board wants to be reasonable, but for us to make an informed decision, it would have been helpful to place this within the piece of property, and so that we have the scope of, because obviously there are concerns within the neighborhood, and we want to address your needs and meet their needs. And just having this one plan of this parcel wasn't exactly as helpful as I think it could have been, and that's just my point of view.
Well, just to address your concern, the, all the boundaries that are close, closest to this shed are shown. The only ones that aren't shown are thousands and thousands of yards away, so it would be hard to imagine that neighborhoods that are thousands and thousands of yards away would be relevant to the construction of a shed, but the, but the immediate boundaries are shown. And there are lots of, I think you have a stack of aerial images that have been provided by various opponents of the range here, so you've seen lots of pictures, you, you know where it's located, you know where the boundaries are, so it seems like it's sort of a, a matter of public knowledge at this point where, where these things are located.
It actually is, is kind of a hindrance on some of it as well, because where I take a picture from your range, your range, sir, not yours, your range could give a different perspective. I could be right on top of a property line behind it, or I could be 1,000 yards away. So even though they may be against the club, I, I truly don't have a great image on all of them. That's why I really feel that-
Well, these distances are all provided by the surveyor on the plot plan that was provided. Distances to the nearest property boundary, boundaries are all shown, so.
And there's no topographicals, that's part of it as well, for elevation. I'm just trying to get a grasp of, again, where we're looking at. Separate from that, I just wanted to go back one moment, please. When we were talking about soil and everything, and I think that's great that you have a stewardship plan, something to actually make sure that your soil is being treated and tested. Pictures show people shooting over water. Is that an accurate representation, the pictures that we, I just want to know, because you're bringing forward that you're doing, again, part of the compliance, as you're saying, you're doing soil, remember, you're doing other things. What do you do about the water bullets are going into the water? How do you test or how would you do it?
We're going, we're going to stop this because it's outside the scope of the hearing at this point, but I will, I will address your question, but we're not going to test, have testimony about it, because the scope of the hearing is the construction of a shed, not where bullets are going.
But you talked about the soil, correct?
Only because it's-
And the lead test?
Yes.
Okay.
Only to let you know that they have an environmental stewardship plan. There's no change in use, there's no need to discuss how they're using the site legally because they are in compliance with the law, and I can tell you that the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, U.S. EPA's, has a 2001 amended in 2005 environmental stewardship plan that's, that comes out of their Best Management Practices for Lead guidance, which you can pull up on your computer, and that guidance is-
I just simply want to know, you're shooting over the water, correct?
But that guidance is extensive, it's adopted by the state of Massachusetts, and they use that to come up with the environmental stewardship plan, and we-
So you're refusing to answer if you go over water.
And we've looked at that plan.
Do you need the retention, the little palm that's in front of the thing?
I don't know. Again, I'm going by pictures, that's why, and I don't see a water here.
There's, and there's, shooting over water, across water is allowed by U.S. EPA and the state of Massachusetts. Shooting into water, shooting at skeet and having it fall into water, there have been some cases about it. It's not illegal, but you have to manage it. Shooting across water, we-
Okay, so it's simply is, yes.
It's legal, and, and if they-
Okay, but, yes.
But it's irrelevant here, and we shouldn't be answering questions about how they shoot, and it's not part of this hearing. We're not going to-
Okay, because you're going into more detail of it than you-
Well, I want you to be comfortable, well, I want you to be comfortable that they have a plan that's well thought out and comes from somewhere, not just out of their head.
Well, thank you for explaining.
You're welcome.
All right, did you have more that you would like to present on this?
Mr. Chair, I, just to, if I may.
You may, sir.
I think the elephant in the room here is, we're here for a reason. There's an active case in the land court in Boston regarding the cease and desist that was issued by the Grand B Select Board. That was affirmed by the ZBA. As a result of those proceedings, I believe the land court, now Attorney Ben Coyle represents the town in that matter, that the court suggested that we try to resolve the matters before them with this process here. Now, note that there was three different alleged violations of the Grand B bylaws. One having to do with the construction, the other, that's now relevant here today, the earth removal, but also violation number three having to do with the use of the property in the 1,000-yard range. So I think that, Attorney Dunn, is where the questions are coming from, that understandably your client, whether it's for cost purposes or other, want to limit the discussion to the extent that you can, to the building of a structure. And it may be, I can't speak for the Board, that perhaps you would get the go-ahead to build a structure, but the use of that structure and the expanded use potentially under either, again, whatever section of the general law you want to use, whether under the non-conforming statute, Section 6 of 48, or 49 for a new proposed use, that is the elephant in the room here. So I, I guess, based upon the purpose, and again, I have not been part of the proceedings in the land court, but the whole reason why we are supposed to be here is to try to resolve those issues, and if the club is unwilling or unable, again, I cannot speak for the Board, but I can only speak for what is going on in Boston, and why I believe the, speaking with Attorney Coyle and just Attorney Rapelson, what the court anticipates, we are to resolve here. And if the position of the gun club is that we are only dealing with a structure here today, I would imagine we will be back in Boston relatively quickly.
Right, that's probably true, because hopefully that can be avoided, but I think you're, you're correct in that the Board may, on, based on incorrect information from range opponents who live somewhere in the vicinity of the range, they're not all butters, for whatever reason, based on incorrect facts and incorrect testimony, the Board previously did make a decision that this was some kind of an expanded use, but they also said it's a grandfathered use, the use of the club for a shooting range is a grandfathered use. There is no expansion of the use. We've provided testimony, we're going to be submitting exhibits of affidavits, which, should we put them into evidence right now?
I believe the Board has, and we will formally move those into evidence at this time.
So we have affidavits of this use of the upper firing line going back to the 1940s, going back to the historic operations of this range, and the improvement of the range in terms of managing it to create better sightlines for targets. That's not an expanded use, that's a better management of an existing club. So there is, is an admission by the Board in, at that prior hearing, that this is an existing use, this is a grandfathered use. So based on that grandfathered use, we've applied for shooter sheds. Now, this club is not required to reduce noise, this club is not subject to the noise regulations. The club, this range is allowed to make whatever noise firearms make that are lawful to use in, in target shooting. But as a concession to the neighborhood, based on all these complaints, they, the club has decided to spend the money to build a shed to try to mitigate noise as a concession, as a good neighbor, as a longtime member of this community. Are they required to by law? No, they are not. They can just shoot where they're, in, from the upper firing area. We've advised them legally without building this shed, but they would like to try to reduce the friction between the club and the neighborhood, and that's why they've made this, this proposal. So, no, we are not here to discuss the type of shooting they do, why they shoot in certain areas or not in other areas, the types of firearms, the type of noise, all of this is not relevant, frankly, and we will not respond to those types of questions. This is about two sheds, and if we have to be back and if the Board can't accept that this is an application for two sheds and refuses to grant the application for two sheds because we won't talk about things that we consider a grandfathered use, then yes, we will be back in court. But if the Board can accept that these are applications for shooter sheds and not for a use, and can accept that this club has gone way beyond what it's required to do by law, by being shut for so long, by not using its upper firing line for so long, so as to not aggravate the neighbors until they get the sound mitigation in place, if the Board can accept that this is a goodwill gesture and a very expensive one between being shut down, hiring lawyers, going through all these proceedings in court, in this, before this Board, and to build the shed and put in sound mitigation material and change their operations in terms of just shooting from an area now at the same location that can mitigate noise, if the, if the Board wants to accept that goodwill gesture, it can approve and, and find that, that the club meets the application requirements for two sheds, it can approve two sheds, and we can all go on with our lives, and if the neighborhood has a problem and thinks that this is unsafe or has other issues, they can bring a lawsuit. If they can prove that, let them bring a lawsuit. The town shouldn't have to incur the cost of litigating these people's claims, and with, frankly, with 500 houses slated to be built, we don't really know who's behind all of this. We've been through plenty of shooting range cases, and I'm not casting aspersions, I just want to say the town doesn't need to step into the middle of it. So we're going to address the two shooter sheds. If that disappoints you, we're sorry, but we think you're on firm legal footing to hear our testimony and the application about the sheds and make a decision on the sheds, and we'll explain that more in the closing argument, why we think you're on firm legal footing doing that.
The ultimate goal here is to, is to show the Board why we're going to be maintaining the character of the neighborhood, which is a threshold issue when dealing with 40A and special permits, is how is this going to alter, change, or ensure the character of the neighborhood and to make sure that it remains unchanged? Now, the club's been in operation for a long time. You heard testimony, it's been over 70 years, and the use hasn't changed, the use has remained consistent, and as my co-counsel has so eloquently stated before, that use has remained consistent, and there, there's been no alteration, there's been no change, and we're really looking at the construction of two structures, one of which has already been built, to ensure safety and to ensure that the neighborhood remains unchanged. What's going to happen when these structures are built? Well, right now, you're talking about firing that's taking place outside, they're not, there's no enclosed structure to, to rally all the shooters to. Shooters are shooting from outside as they always have been allowed to do and as is customary on the range, and with the construction of both of these sheds, the shooters are going to be able to go into the shed, they're going to have to check in with the club, do it within the proposed hours of operation to shoot in a safe manner and to be shooting with the added benefit of the sound suppression, which is part of the rationale for some of the complaints that have been directed towards the club, is this issue of noise, which we've alluded to, we are protected as a, as a gun range in Massachusetts, and we are not to be unreasonably enjoined from using the range on the basis of noise. So essentially, what these structures are doing is they're allowing the neighborhood to, it's, we're allowing the neighborhood to, to ease down a little bit, to not have as much noise as there is right now, and by having shooters shoot from the sound-suppressed areas, the mitigation is going to ideally help the complaints from the neighbors. So, you know, we're, we're talking about the character of the neighborhood, and we're talking about whether it's going to change, and it's, it's not going to change, it's going to be the same that it was before.
Or better, improved.
Or, yeah, or improved, which is not contemplated by the statute, but in fact, the improvement will be so beneficial to the neighborhood that they're going to be getting structures that were never there, and there was never any sort of sound suppression for 70-plus years in the range, so it's, it's inevitable, and, and very likely that noise complaints are going to be reduced based on the construction. So that's really what we're looking at here, is, that's the threshold issue aside from the bylaw requirements that we just went through. And, and again, as we stated before, and we've talked about it extensively, is the grandfathered use of the club, and what does that mean? It means that the club is able to be a shooting range, to, to be able to use their firearms on the range in a, in a legal manner, as prescribed by Massachusetts statute and case law, and I'm sure Mr. O'Toole knows that there's not a lot of guiding precedent here regarding ranges in Massachusetts. There have been a few cases, and those cases have been at the Superior Court level, maybe the appeals court, but there's not a lot of whole guiding precedent in the Supreme Judicial Court, meaning- Judicial Court, meaning this is an issue that hasn't been litigated extensively, and there haven't been a whole lot of decisions regarding what it means to substantially expand a use. So when the town essentially is asking us what we're going, why we're not applying for a change in the use, we're telling you that the reason for doing so is because we're allowed by statute and by 40A to engage in activities that we have been, at varying lengths, varying distances, all over the range, frankly. But by proposing these sheds, we're essentially confining a whole host of activity to these two areas, as opposed to being all spread out around the range, and we're enhancing the safety of the range. And we're doing this not only to promote safety on the range, but also to help the neighbors to quell their fears and anxieties about the practices that are taking place on the range, which already were exceptional. There's been no incidents on the range, and I've confirmed that with the club. There's been no safety issues, no one has been injured on the club, other than maybe slipping on ice. Historically, we're talking 70-plus years. So any concerns that the neighbors have raised, we're looking to help ease those concerns by going above and beyond what we've already been doing, and the construction of these sheds is going to help assure that. So in closing, we're going to do a two-tier closing. Firstly, I'll remind you of the standard. The standard is 40A, Section 9. Essentially, we have to, the special permit has to be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw, and you're allowed to set whatever sort of safeguards or limitations that you so desire as the zoning board's appeals. Furthermore, we're applying for the construction of these two sheds to help mitigate shooting noise and to enhance safety on the range. And finally, I will remind the board that Massachusetts case law essentially bars the board from considering prior zoning violations. So part of the rationale for explaining to the board that we don't want to focus on what's happened in the past or other outstanding issues not relating to this application, is that zoning violations aren't considered legally tenable ground for denial of an application. So anything that has been raised in the past, it goes out the window. We're talking about the application in front of you, the compliance of the application with the bylaw, and the effect on the neighborhood. And that's where the board's purview lies. We don't concern ourselves with issues of safety, issues of noise, or any other issues that are unrelated to the application, because case law restricts us from doing so. And that case is Fefard versus Conservation Commission of Redding, 41 Mass. App., CT. 565, 1996. And I would ask that the board consider that when making a decision, that any prior zoning violations are irrelevant in your considerations and that you should consider granting our application for two special permits. And I'll turn it over to Attorney Dean.
So to supplement Attorney Raefelson's closing, I'd like to just get into some of the constitutional issues here, because they impact this board directly. We're litigating a case, for example, in Michigan right now, challenging a zoning scheme as unconstitutional under the Second Amendment, and there are clear precedents at the U.S. Supreme Court and the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals and the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, that certain types of actions taken by local boards are unconstitutional. So I wanted just to give you a little bit of background on the law, to give you a little bit of education to understand, if you don't already, some of the implications of what you're doing here from a constitutional perspective. First, you have at least three different types of constitutionally-protected rights. You've got property rights. These are vested property rights. That has a special meaning under the law, and they're, are subject to extraordinary protections, vested rights that predate zoning, grandfathered use, and those rights have to be respected constitutionally. Then you have the right to assemble as a club and to come together and to exercise free speech and choosing to own and shoot and train and practice with firearms. That's a right of assembly and a First Amendment, and First Amendment rights that are wrapped up in this bundle of rights that shooting club members possess. And then you have the right to bear arms under the Second Amendment. Now, you have the 2008 decision of Heller, the U.S. Supreme Court, that said very clearly, this is not just about carrying firearms for self-defense. The right to bear arms, going back to the beginning, also includes the right to hunt. It includes the right to bear arms for self-defense. It includes the right to bear arms for civil defense, to step forward as a member of the community, protecting our towns and our states and our country, and it includes the right for sports and recreational shooting. The Supreme Court went beyond that. It said that in this, the Second Amendment encompasses a bundle of rights, not just a single right to own a firearm, but to actually be able to practice at a safe place, to be able to practice and train with that firearm, to be able to use it effectively. So lawful firearms being used for lawful purposes, and then that practice that goes along with those lawful purposes is allowed at shooting ranges. Now, the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals took up a case called Etsel versus Chicago recently, and in 2011 was the first decision, and then in 2017, I'll just explain quickly what happened there. The City of Chicago tried to ban shooting ranges altogether. The Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals, which is the court of appeals right below the U.S. Supreme Court, said, based on Heller and based on McDonald, with the case involving Chicago in 2010, that the City of Chicago could not ban ranges with an outright ban. And so the City of Chicago went back and changed their zoning laws to make it just very difficult to sight ranges. And they made it so difficult that effectively ranges indoor or outdoor could not be sighted in the City of Chicago. And so again, they got brought back to court and again up to the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals, and the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals said again that this ended up being an effective ban. Now, the argument of the City of Chicago was, well, there are ranges outside of Chicago that these people, and some of them live outside of Chicago, they can use those ranges. And the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals said, no, that's irrelevant to the issue of whether a right, this right is being infringed. So saying that there are other places to shoot or other shooting clubs, and that just shutting down this club or limiting this club so that effectively certain types of shooting can't occur that are lawful, I just wanted you to be aware that saying that there are other places where you could shoot is not an argument. So this is the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals, and we now currently have a case in the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals with the same sort of issue. So what does that mean here? So if this club, and they could have done this already, and we've cautioned them not to, to try to work with the town and work this out amicably, but they could have already brought a 1983 action, which Attorney O'Toole will be familiar with, in federal court, and if they prevail, they can make the Town of Granby pay not just for the Town of Granby's legal fees, but for all of their legal fees and their damages in loss of membership, loss of dues, costs that they've incurred all along the way for being shut down for all this time. They have that right to go to court right now and do that. We have cautioned them against doing that. Well, they're not trying to hurt Granby. They're not trying to hurt you. They're not trying to embarrass you. They're not trying to embarrass this town. They like Granby. They've been a longtime good citizen of this town, and they want you to make the right decision for the right reasons, and they want to keep this narrow and not have you fight opponent's battles. So where you have people who, for whatever reason, and sometimes it's financial, often in these cases, we find at the end of the day, there's a developer standing behind a few people who go forward, and it looks like individual people arguing, but it's actually a developer behind them. And that's, may not be the case here, but in every case we've been involved with so far, at the end of the day, that's what we find through all the depositions and the rest. But whether that's happening here or not, you have people who are arguing about raising safety and noise and wetlands and public, what was the other one? The Public Health or Board of Public Health and biomass and drinking water and all kinds of issues. Clearly, these opponents don't want the range to exist. They don't want, it's not just one type of shooting. That type of shooting could end, and they'd still be complaining, because when, frankly, the cease and desist was in place, and the range didn't shoot from their upper firing area, the complaints still continued. And then when the club didn't shoot from the lower shooting area, which they could still shoot from even without the shed, the complaints still continued. And they were, the police were sent out there day after day to stop their competitions, to go through the parking lot, looking at everyone's license plates, looking. Now, the police aren't a problem, but they were sent there over and over and over again until finally, they said they weren't going to go anymore, because they were just so tired of getting these complaints, that when they got there, they found out we're baseless. They were being used, just like we believe you are being used. You're being used to litigate something that somebody somewhere has a financial interest in litigating but doesn't want to pay for, and is trying to get you to think that you're supposed to take this on. But the zoning laws, Attorney Raefelson explained, is very clear. This is outside your scope. You have no authority to shut down a range based on speculation, which is what that stack, that pile is, or on issues that are outside of your authority. If you don't have a permit in front of you and you don't have actual safety hazards in front of you, you're not supposed to regulate ranges. You don't have to do that. You might want to, but you're not required to do that. You're not required to know what a safe range is or isn't. You're not required to design a safe range, to hire experts. And frankly, that's what courts were made for. They're made to hear expert testimony. The plaintiffs would bring in experts, we would bring in experts, and we'd talk about what's a safe range. If they want to litigate that, let them litigate. If they can show it's more than speculation and more than just trying to shut this range down for the effect of shutting down a range and being able to sell cheap land at a higher price later, which is what we've seen in other cases, I'm not saying it's happening here, but developers come in, they buy the land up around the range cheaply, and then they try to shut down the range. I'm not saying it's happening here, but that is what our experience is. If that's what's...
Reminder, no offers from the audience, please.
If that's what's happening, this board just shouldn't be used. It shouldn't allow itself to be used. So we would recommend that you not step outside on the line of what your authority is, that you not take legal risks, because you expose the town to enormous liability in federal court on constitutional grounds, and you expose to continued litigation in land use court. But instead, we have a whole court system designed to addressing these people's complaints. Let them take their papers to state or federal court and make their case. There are plenty of them, they can share the cost. Let them make their case, and we'll respond. And if the club should be shut down, it'll get shut down. But it's so far beyond your legal role, the statute, the bylaws, and your capabilities. You don't have the ability to assess who's a good witness, who isn't. You don't have experts in front of you. How could you possibly make a good decision here on these issues? If I were in your shoes and I sit on a board, just as you do in my town, I would be very concerned that I'm supposed to defend people's lives and keep them safe and know what a safe range is? I'm supposed to hold a hearing on something that's not even before me properly, and I have no experts, and this is a technical expert type of issue? These cases are won and lost on the basis of experts. That's what we say from the very beginning to our clients. It all comes down to experts. And the battle of the experts will occur in court, or it won't, if they don't litigate. If they're not serious and they don't have real claims, they won't litigate. But this is not within the purview of this board, and you shouldn't feel pushed and shamed and pushed in public to have to take on something that's not within your authority, because you're only going to do a poor job and expose the town to hundreds, if not millions of dollars. In Chicago, they paid over a million dollars just for one case in legal fees to the other So with that, we appreciate your listening and considering our arguments. Thank you very much.
So that wrapped up your case at that point, right?
Yes.
Because we are dealing with an issue that is before us now and is occurring development of the property, that it only has to do with the building of the shed, not, again, former zoning issues that have occurred past things, and we're looking at what is being built now and what it's going to be used for. Do we have anyone that is a butter at this time that has something specific to that shed? And again, that will show light. I'll give you a few moments. You may come forward if you'd like.
Again, just a reminder that not zoning.
Yeah, my name is Richard Lamrell. I live at 123 Chickaby Street. I bought the property right where they put the new range in. I can see him driving in there from my house. I've been there 39 years. I've never seen nothing with this club the way it's operated in the last seven years, eight years. It's never been nothing like this. I was served a no trespass order. Robbing the board was served a no trespass order. Mike Polczepak was served a no trespass order. We are the closest of butters, okay? We know what was going on there and what was, you know, being done, and that's why I got a no trespass order. And the Upper Range here, I never, ever seen anyone shoot from that slab. They actually took and graded, he dozed the whole top of the hill, pushed the stuff over towards the wetlands, which is still there. It just, I don't know why, you know, nothing's in compliance. It just, I've been there, like I say, 39 years, and I can't even sit on my deck on a Sunday afternoon. When the Upper Range was open, I could see him driving up the hill. I could see Andy coming over the hill with the bulldozer. If you go down Chickaby Street and you look at the range where the road used to go in to the shooting range, which was an 80-yard range, not 1,000, not a 700-yard range, okay? It was an 80-yard range, and that now has moved 1,000 yards towards me.
Do you have a specific concern with the actual construction of the sheds?
Actually, no. The way the shed is built, those slabs are 10 by 90, because before I got a no trespass order, I measured them both. I walked the property, I saw what was buried up there, and there's a lot, believe me. I was not happy. It's just like, what they're saying was there previously was not there. You can call me a liar or whatever, but someone's lying here, and I don't think it's me, because I've been there that long. And I watch what's going on. I watch the people who drive by. I know it's, you know, I just...
Looking for a specific...
Okay, the top of the hill, they hauled all the filling. They put the fill, trap rock dust, on top of ledge and poured the slab on top of that. It probably, it probably sat about a month, maybe, if that, before they poured the slab, because they had a big event coming up. And there's...
That's kind of in the past, and I'm looking for something specific.
Well, the slab that's there now, he was saying they want to attach to that slab another six feet out to make it 16 feet and go down 50. They want to attach to that slab that's there, they have the existing slab on the end. They didn't say which side of the slab they're going to put it on. I just don't know. Everything I've heard as a butter and being notified and something being said, this is going to be done, and that wasn't done. I was told it was supposed to be a select cut up there, and everything I was told was a lie, as far as I'm concerned.
I'll move forward to the next...
Okay. That's about all I had to say.
I do thank you for that. Just so that you know, the board does not, or at least speaking for myself, like to see anybody that would violate a no trespass order. We do recognize that the facility has the right to have members only on the property unless it's an open function, so please do not. I'm not encouraging anybody to go on their property to try to see anything further or take pictures. Please have permission. Yes, please state.
My name is Mike Polczepak.
No, up in the back here, gentleman in blue.
My name is... I live in Rochers. I live on 30 Bag Hill Road, and I've been there 35 years. And the range, you can hear me, the range was done.
Can you come up, please?
You want me to approach?
Yes, please.
Just, yeah, if anyone's going to speak, they can come forward so that they could be on the Granby camp, so people at home would be able to see.
But anyway, I heard a lot of threats being thrown to the board, and I just want to say that the protection of the residents that are there in a residential neighborhood, that it was never a 1,000-foot range. And if you wind up putting a building there, then you're okay in a 1,000-foot range that they never put in for. It was, I lived there, the range was never a question. Great neighbors, until he took over. When he took over, the rules went down. They did anything they wanted to do. No permits were taken out, nothing was done, and now they want this. By putting this building there, it justifies their 1,000-foot range. That means we're okay in that. It's not okay. It's a residential neighborhood. A 1,000-foot range should not be put there. That's why you're getting people from New York and Connecticut, because they don't have a 1,000-foot range around here. And that's what was attractive to them. And so they stripped all the trees out of there, and they're making this 1,000-foot illegal range, and now by putting a building there, they'll make it legal. there, they'll make it legal if this board okay's it. That's what I'm saying. And I don't think that we should okay it, because they've never done anything by the rules yet, so. And we have to as residents.
All right, that's that point. Sir Polczlopec, would you please step forward?
I am a public speaker.
And you are in a butter?
I am on a butter. I butt the club by about 2,000 feet under southern boundary.
Can you please state your name and the microphone for the-
My name's Mike Polczlopec. I reside at 24 West Street, and I've already explained my property at the club's budding property line. I'm going to hold my comments to the building of the shed, although-
Thank you, I appreciate it.
The others surely did it. We had a 10-minute dissertation on, I don't know what, Second Amendment. I can see where the board is dissatisfied with this plan they submitted. That upper range is at quite an elevation. They have quite a roadway going up there. No topographical lines have been shown to show any of the steepness of that grade going up, what kind of water, where the water's going to go. Will it end up in Richard's backyard like it did before, on and on and on. The two things that I pick up on this plan, that I have four years' land survey experience as a technician and as an instrument researcher, this plan is not stamped. I thought presenting a plan to the board, it had to be certified.
We've already actually covered that part, but we've not gotten any certified site plan with the topographical.
Okay, so that was a major thing. There was other things, because I was actually a checker at one point. There's little-
Did you have something specific to that?
We did submit a plan to Kathy Leonard. She had it signed and stamped, and we have a copy and we're receiving of a stamped plan. I know, it's not in your thing, that's not why you don't have it, I don't know, but we did-
Yeah, we don't mean by our town accepting it as stamped. Like, if it all through them.
Well, whatever.
We do have a version, which is, does have the-
Okay, we're kind of moving past that at this point.
You know, to me, that was a major thing, on who did this plan, are the measurements accurate, and who's verifying whether they're accurate. Another thing is that when I'm looking at the plan, I'm seeing a 10 by 90, which was submitted to you. Now, all of a sudden, I'm hearing the building's not going to be 10 by 90, it's going to be 16 by 30, you know.
They would have to go by what we are, would be granting at the application for.
Okay, well, you know, all I can say is that-
They can vary from that, or we then would have-
Roof size is going to affect the runoff of water, on and on and on. All that has to be discussed and thought about in your planning or your acceptance of their buildings. The biggest thing that bothers me is on the constructed shooting shed. That thing has a hell of a history. It goes back, I think, to 214, where I think what happened, I'm trying to piece together, and through the DEP files on it, I'm piecing together, is the club went ahead and poured a 10 by 90 slab of concrete. It was then brought to their attention that the concrete was poured in a wetland buffer. Andy, I'm going to fix that, he filled the wetland. Now, the, you know, I'm going by the DEP file. Well, what this, what this is-
I have to stop you for a moment, sir, because we don't have anything before the board that involves any type of violation that had anything to do with that pouring of a pad that would affect us in the decision-making for their structure. So I cannot take hearsay into consideration.
I believe that Joe Shalou will present you all the needed documents to prove what I am saying.
And again, that would not have a bearing on what we're-
Well, would the bearing be in effect that under wetland law, Section Mass General Law 131, Section 40, when you build within a wetland buffer, you have to file a NOI with either the, I don't understand how, what I'm getting at is you're going to give them acceptance on a building that is totally illegal. You know-
I'm going to have to cut you short on that, sir, if you're going to keep referring to inferences of something that we do not have in front of us, as the zoning board of appeals has a governing body over at this moment to decide or to change. Again, if we're looking at something that's already been done, this should have been researched or looked at by the conservation board, other departments that would actually enforce it, too, so.
But what I'm saying is it was never presented to these other boards. How could they look at it if it was never presented? You know, they're in violation of law for a building that you're going to okay or not okay.
I can say that it is, sir. I'm going to have to stop you at this point, Mr.-
Okay, well, the final, the final point-
No, I'm going to have to stop you at this point, because your points are kind of bringing-
Well, no, this last one-
Sir, I'm asking you to please return back to the audience.
Easy. Opposing team got a hell of a say.
Please. Thank you.
Oh, boy, Joe, good luck.
Okay, I'm not the land of butter, but I can hear all the loud shooting, so I think I have seen-
Is it pertinent to the actual building of that? I'll allow you, but if it deviates, again, I just have to remind people that this really has to go with the structures that are being built, that that is what is before us today, not a prior event that happened or, you know, what you believe or speculate as being a violation. We are not a court of law, land court here to say that what was done was a violation. Please keep that in mind.
Okay, my name is Rich DeMaracki. I live on Bachelor Street. I just had a few quick comments I'd like to make. Now, the attorney for the gun club brought up state law and local law about one of the criteria that have to be looked at, safety, in relation to this shooting shed. He brought up safety, and he also brought up long-range shooting safety. So I'd like to just comment on that, because they brought it up.
There's a rebuttal.
Okay, first of all, when the question was asked by the chairman, what buffer zone they had, they couldn't answer the question. The attorney just didn't know. Finally, they said, well, there's trees as a buffer. Now, I went out there with the property owner. I was standing on the property owner's property, and I could see the target. You asked how close was the target, furthest target to the property line. It was about 50, 50 feet. So, again, that's a safety concern, and that would be a reason, in my opinion, not to approve the shooting shed. Now, you also asked, where was parcel A, B, C, and D? They had no idea where those parcels were. I don't believe they were ever out on that property to even see those ranges, and I don't believe they know where those parcels even are, because they couldn't answer it. The, I did look at the site plan, and I think it's totally inadequate. It doesn't show you the scope of the property, as was already mentioned. It doesn't show you any ranges. And as it was already mentioned, why would you have a shooting shed? To shoot. And why, where would you shoot? You would shoot on a range. So even though there's a separate violation, that's not my issue. I'm referring or I'm commenting on what their attorney said, that there's a safety concern. The property, the person who owns that property next to the furthest target, he sells wood. He's out there all the time cutting wood, and he's saying that it's very dangerous. So, in my opinion, I don't think you should approve the permit for those two buildings. Now, my last comment is, I don't really understand why you're doing a hearing for two different structures. They're different sizes, different materials, different designs, and I would think that you would, I think people would prefer to have separate hearings for both those structures. They're completely different, even though the use is the same. So again, I would just like to say that I hope you do not approve the special permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I'm going to reiterate that we just, not so much on the safety, sir, as to how the actual use of this sugar shed would cause or impact anything, because without a sugar shed, and I don't want to make a case for the gun club, but I want to let them understand that we understand that side of it, that the use is already a non-compliance use. It has been permitted, and shooting is allowed, so even if they're at a pad, the distance is still the same and setbacks are the same. We are just trying to grasp that. So does this have different bearing than, other than-
Well, Mike has a bearing on the application and its conformance with the requirements of the Zoning Bylaws.
Okay, if you could please step forward. Thank you for understanding.
My name is Joe Shalou, 140 School Street, Granby. Not a directa butter, but a directa butter to the noise and the increased activity at the gun club. I guess, I submitted a document earlier to Kathy Leonard and the town clerk. I'm not sure if you received the copy. You did, okay. The first page of that kind of details out sequentially what is required for a special permit under zoning bylaws. It refers back to Table 3, under, you know, what's required for a gun, yeah, a membership club, non-business membership club, and that includes that it must include a site plan, a planning board review, and site plan approval, or a special permit from you, a planning board review, and site plan approval, okay? One, I think we have clear concerns on the site plan and whether it meets the standard requirements of the Section 6 of the zoning bylaws. I have several comments to that specifically.
We'll have to make it in about a five-minute period.
Right, okay, yes. But I just want to, you know, just let you know, that's on page 14 of that, on the table, if you're looking for the area that covers, you know, membership clubs and what's required for a special permit, because they are in a residential area. Section 6.26 states that a special permit granting authority shall submit one copy of said application to the planning board, to the Board of Appeals, which is you, which is the approver in this case, the planning board, the Board of Health, the Conservation Commission for their review. I have no indication that a copy of this application and the supporting documentation was sent to any of those additional committees, where issues relating to wetlands impact, environmental concerns, that they said they have their, you know, mitigation plans in place, where most of their targets are in wetland buffer areas. I don't see how they can mitigate the lead accumulation there, because they can't disturb those buffer areas. They spoke to the USDA guidance on gun ranges. I think if you read that, you would find that it says, "Do not shoot into or over wetlands or water areas," which they clearly do consistently, all down their range. There are wetlands or water areas they shoot into or over, including the buffer areas. So, I believe that they have failed to meet that standard of Section 6.26, and I understand they didn't submit enough information to make a meaningful review of the Conservation Commission, you know, so for you to schedule a hearing with them, if you were not going to accept their application because it did not meet the minimum standards required, then I would understand that. If you're going to consider this application, even though it fails to meet the zoning bylaw documentation standards for an application or a special permit, then I have a real concern, and I would submit a request that any decision be delayed until these boards have a copy of this permit and get the chance to hold a public hearing or a review on the impact of their jurisdictions, okay? Section 6.27 includes criteria used in evaluating special permit applications. And once again, since the gun, the Bowen Gun Club refused to supply all the documentation required for this board to meaningfully evaluate how these structures would be used and what they would be used in conjunction with, like targets, that part is not complied with. You can't evaluate that criteria, because there's nothing that can be measured against the criteria. And under 6.33 is the site plan content, and that gets into the specifics. And I don't see where anything that the gun club provided met anything of 6.33.1 through 0.8. And I don't see anything, because there is a provision that certain, you know, components of that could be waived if the reviewing authority, like the planning board, felt that they were not required. But there has been no waiver that I could see on public file that would support waiving any of those conditions. So all of those conditions should apply to the submission to be considered a complete application.
You have one minute, sir.
Okay, so just so you know, I believe that you should deny this application as an incomplete application, because it failed to meet the minimum documentation required of the Granby bylaws for a special permit application. And their map does not show all of the full partial there, I don't believe. And just if you wanted visual evidence, that will show you, based on the scale, that that lower shooting shed is with 100 feet of standing water, which would put it in a wetland buffer area. They don't display that, which would have prompted you to get the Environmental Commission or the Conservation Commission involved in this discussion to evaluate that shed, if you approve it, and whether it was appropriately located.
Thank you, sir. Your time has-
So for all of these reasons, I feel you should deny it as in support of the application.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions to the proximity? Just give us a moment, please. Did we have any other butters that are directly, yes, sir, would you please step forward? And again, just a reminder, to try to be as pertinent to the situation as possible, not past violations. Appreciate it. Please state your name for the record.
My name's Robin LaBord. Live at 88 Chickaby Street. One of the things that the club was saying was that they should be able to put the shed up because they're like grandfathered in and that, and I've lived there most of my, most of my life, except for five years, and there was nothing there before. So I don't, I don't see how it's grandfathered in, because from what it was to what it is are drastically different, and from what I understand, and that's supposed to be able to change, change the club that much without permits, okay? So, you know, that upper shooting spot was, was not there before. It was only the lower one. The range was a lot smaller, and, you know, this is not what it was, and there's no way it could be grandfathered.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I believe we've heard opposition. Do we have one more? Oh, sir, if you could step forward. Sorry, didn't see your hand.
My name's Sean Lamro. Long Granby resident. I was just, a question, keep it simple. I'm just looking to find out the NPDs permit number for this project, if there's one been filed on this. Also, if there's a peer review done for this project as well. NPDs is N-P-D-E-S.
I don't have any of that in front of me where I'd be able to refer to that. I can look back through.
Okay, because I think that was brought up a while back. All right, that's all I have for questions.
Oh, okay.
So you're going to get those numbers out to the public?
You can, yes.
All right, thank you.
I'll look into that, so. All right, so I believe now at this point, we have all that would like to step forward in any opposition or for. Do you have anything else you would like to present in the hearing for this case at this time?
Just very briefly.
Yes, sir.
A few points to address.
So there is some reference to compliance with various aspects of the zoning bylaws, and the club provided five documents, five copies of the application to, to the town, and the planning board technically is supposed to make recommendations within 35 days. and the planning board technically is supposed to make recommendations within 35 days regarding an application. We, we haven't heard anything to that effect, so, under the bylaw, if the planning board doesn't make recommendations within 35 days, then it's waived essentially. So, and that's referring to conservation and other relevant bodies within the town. Also, there have been discussions regarding what was and what wasn't provided regarding the layout of the property. If the board so chooses and wants to, we are not in opposition to a site plan, a site visit, which is contemplated under Massachusetts law, and it's typically something that's done frequently in conjunction with these applications. If there are any areas that are blurry or vague, we invite the board to do a site visit, if they want to do that before a decision is rendered. And then, just one other issue regarding safety that was mentioned, just to clarify, safety is mentioned in the bylaw requirements, but it's categorized as pedestrian safety, and I believe that's in conjunction, or in reference to vehicles, because it's in the same section as vehicular access and vehicular safety. And when you say pedestrian, you typically, pedestrian means pedestrians on the road. So, you know, if, if people aren't trespassing, then there shouldn't, there's no issue safety-wise. We've already gone into the staggered start times. So, again, trespass is a whole different issue. If there's trespassing pedestrians, that's out of our control. We do have trust, no trespass orders on people. So, that would be the only relevance of safety, I believe, to, to the application. I don't know if Martha wants to say one more thing.
If you could hold on for a second. Under 48, Section 9, you know, you cited it well, and talked with, that the use has to be in harmony with the general purpose of the bylaw, you know, and specific criteria is also set forth. 1.1 of the bylaw does have a general purpose provision, and safety, amongst other issues, is mentioned in there. Understanding that you stuck to 6.7, 6.27, the specific criteria, but the statute also references the general purpose of the bylaws as a whole, not just under Section 6.
Understandably.
So, do you have a copy?
Of the bylaw?
Of 1.1?
Oh, I've reviewed the bylaw.
Okay.
But, just in relation to that, we did talk about earlier, there's been no incidents on the club, ever, to speak of regarding any safety issues, besides maybe someone slipping on the ice.
There's no changes.
And the use is consistent, so it's, we're not proposing any extensive changes here, as we've gone over. So, you know, safety is, everyone on the range has to be trained. There's, there's no one on, on the range.
We are at this time taking no more questions. No, please. I actually kind of want a rebuttal or clarification on there. We understand the use of the range is a non-performing gun range. Not trying to change that fact or limit that. What I also believe is, there's been an expansion, again, maybe not physical as much even, but you have 72 years of operation, correct? That's phenomenal, to not have any accidents, injuries. I think that is great, that's commendable. It's a wonderful thing. What I need to know is, or would really love to know is, 72 years ago, how many members did you have at that time using this property versus what you had in 2017? We won't go into 18.
Well, I'll just briefly talk about that.
Because I will put into play with sound and everything else.
Well, first of all, when we look at the, the bylaws and grandfather use, we look back to the date of the incorporation of the bylaw, which wasn't 70-something years ago, it's probably closer to 40-something years ago, or 50-something years ago. And the, the range itself has experienced ebbs and flows, and membership has changed, and that's always been variable. And there's nothing in Massachusetts general laws that forbids membership increases paralleled to the growth of a club. And when we talk about substantial expansions and extensions, or changes, we talk about very substantial. We're allowed to grow, we're allowed to shrink. That's always something that's happened. We go up, we go down, we go up, we go down. And, you know, that's something that's been talked about extensively in the case law.
I understand, but I'm just wondering if you actually have specifics as to how much you've increased since then, because of course you have to file taxes, and you have to show how many members you had. So there must be an amount, I'm just wondering for the amount of traffic that we're talking about, that has increased since the original 2010 issuance of a permit that expired, have we increased that much? Because I also saw on your website that, and wonderful for you, and the law is, is good with that, that there is no cap as to how many memberships we're looking to get at that club.
Well, certainly, you know.
It kind of will affect the neighborhood in my opinion.
We're the smallest club in, in the town.
We are.
But again, you know, so we're, we're looking at a. What is the membership?
It doesn't mean we can't be one of the larger ones.
That's fine. I'm just looking at where we're at for membership, do we know?
So what the, what the land use cases make clear in Massachusetts is that success is allowed. You're allowed to be successful and to, and to grow. And frankly, there's no relevance to what membership was in 1940 compared to now, or 1970 compared to now, because you're allowed to grow. And the club has gone up and down, as the shooting sports have gone up and down, and the ownership of firearms has gone up and down. And as we all know, since 9/11, firearms ownership has gone up. And there's a resurgence in the shooting sports among young people, among women, for the first time probably ever in our country, and with all of the guys who've always enjoyed the shooting sports. So, right now, the club is enjoying a period of, of success, you know, except for the fact that they're shut down in part, and they have the cease and desist order and all these costs. But that's allowed, and it's completely clear in the case law in Massachusetts and in other states, frankly, that that is allowed, so it's really.
Well, I'm not saying it's allowed. I'm just trying to look at what the actual impact possibility is, because the advertisement, of course, and again, that's great and successful.
Well, the club was open, and it had, and it had ample parking, and it had ample facilities, and it's only, compared to what it was like when it was shut down under a cease and desist, and desist order, which we think frankly was inappropriate, that's not a fair comparison, because it's, there's no change in the club membership, because this upper firing area and shooter, shooter shed in the upper firing area exists, because shooting's allowed there.
So I'm not going to get any answer as to what the membership was in 72 years ago.
We haven't looked at it.
I just want to, yes or no?
I have no idea. And frankly, the records that were kept from 72 years ago are pretty much inconsistent. We've got a pretty good handle on membership now, so.
So do we, just curious, do we have any idea?
We have a complete, we have 50 members at the moment, approximately.
And recall that the board, the board is, is able to.
Right. Out of that, out of that, there are people that just shoot bows and arrows, too. So, I mean.
That would be me, so all right.
The board has deference in its decisions, too. I mean, you're allowed to set safeguards and limitations, so if you think there's any issues that come up from here, it's right in the 48, Section 9.
Yeah, no, that's great. I just, that has obviously been things that have been brought up, and I'd like to just have that answered, which you did, to try to talk about membership and increase flow to the property and on the property. So, thank you for, thank you for finding answer.
Are you done, or do you have more to say? Okay. So I'd like to add just a couple of points that were raised about shooting over or into water. Again, there is no prohibition, there is a prohibition under the federal environmental laws on point source discharges into navigable waters, and there is no case law that says that a gun is a point source discharge. Otherwise, all hunters out there would be point source discharges requiring NPDES permits under the Federal Clean Water Act, and they don't, they aren't, and they don't. And there's been lots of litigation in New York and other states, in Connecticut, Remington, New York Athletic Club, and lots of other cases about what a point source discharge is. We litigated one of those cases, the Medicon case in the Second Circuit, and it made clear that shooting for, is the application of a product, which is the bullets, for its intended purpose on an existing legal range, and that lead has to be managed. There's no prohibition on shooting in any particular area. Now, one range we represented was Blue Trail in Connecticut. We litigated that case, and two cases, and they shoot over a reservoir, into a backstop on the other side of the reservoir. And the range opponents made all kinds of claims about, oh, lead in water and all of this. Lots of experts in court, lots of evidence, lots of sampling data, and, you know, the court threw out those claims, and we, we won that case. So, I just want you to be clear that, yes, you can shoot over water. You can, projectiles can land in water, which they did in that case. If they ricocheted off of the backstop on the other side of the reservoir, they could land in the reservoir, they were found in the reservoir, and that's not an issue. So if you go to that particular page in the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency guidance document, 2005 Best Management Practices guidance document, you will see that it says, "If you want to stay out of litigation in federal court, try to avoid water." But that's only about staying out of litigation in federal court. It doesn't mean you're going to lose in federal court. It just means if you want to try to avoid litigation, try to avoid water, because otherwise you'll be in court arguing about these things. The other thing I just wanted to point out, as Ms. Mercier reminded me, is that, just so that you are comfortable with this, if you don't have this background, the club has been working very closely with DEP for years. DEP's been on and off the site for years, is pleased with everything that's going on there. The club has had to achieve certain goals, which they have achieved, and DEP signs off on those. They've also worked with the Army Corps of Engineers. The Army Corps of Engineers has been out to the site and reviewed. The Army Corps of Engineers gets involved with the filling, and, and also the excavation of fill from wetlands, in, when it's in navigable water. And virtually everything in New, in New England is considered a navigable water, even though it's just, you know, wet soil. But the, so the Army Corps is very involved with the site, and, and they, they looked at the site and said, "No, you're good, and I'm not requiring anything there with the shooting operation in the way it's configured with these wetlands on the site." Also, the Board of Health, the range opponents have gone repeatedly to the Board of Health. I personally was at one of those meetings, where this whole line of attack was eventually shut down, you know, picking at every issue that they, you could imagine. So the Board of Health has also been thoroughly looking at the site and has said to the club, "We're not concerned, basically, but anything that you do that's new out there, we want to know when you're doing things out there." So the club is, as a courtesy, letting them know of what they're doing, and also, as a courtesy, provided their environmental stewardship plan to the Board of Health, so they could review the whole plan and, and see how the club manages lead in the environment. So just wanted you to know that they're involved. They've also, the club has also been working closely with the Conservation Commission over many years now, and that's part of this whole DEP and Army Corps thing. The, the range opponents also went to DEP, and they claimed that the club was polluting the environment and made all sorts of claims. DEP got involved, and they required that the club send them their environmental stewardship plan to, the Connecticut, to Massachusetts DEP to review, and they, so they have also reviewed their plan to ensure that it's adequate and complies with the law. So, we just want you to be comfortable that you're not out there hanging out there alone in the wind. Every kind of, every level of government, state and local government, that you can imagine, has been asked to get involved with and look at this club based on the range opponent's complaints. And, you know, sincere or valid or not, it doesn't really matter. We just want you to know that it's, it's been fly specked, and that you're, you're not the sole safeguard of the public in looking at this range. You have a limited mission. Each of these other boards and commissions had a limited mission, and it's been looked at in a very comprehensive and thorough way.
Okay. Is that all you have?
That's all. Thank you.
So that's, this time you have no further things to submit, discuss?
No, just want, for the record, all the submissions that we had made previously, just to be part of the record, including the affidavits.
The exhibits of what they are, because also they get a good one.
The, the affidavits.
Yeah. So the exhibits that you should have are the legal memorandum, the pictures of the
So, the legal memorandum, the pictures of the shooter shed, the site plan, the wetlands Do you have the wetlands map from our environmental consultant? And then all the affidavits.
It's got everything in here, so. Four and a half.
And for the record, we, we have stated this before, but a stamped plan, site plan was provided to the town and stamped, and we have a copy of that.
So that is stamped by the actual surveyor, you're saying, at that time?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. That's why I just wanted clarification for the public of that, that it's not stamped into submission into our town clerk, because some people are getting that confused, that it was stamped by our town clerk.
No, it was stamped by the surveyor and stamped as received.
Oh, there's, okay, so you have.
Clarification, I like that.
It looks like you have everything, as long as you have the affidavits.
Okay, so at this point, I just want to direct our board that this is the time that you need to ask any questions, either to the butters or to the actual club or the representatives, so that we may take that information and to be absorbed into making a decision on this hearing. So, any of the board members have any questions at this time?
I think one of the questions that you were asking about buffer zones was, the furthest targets out along Mike Polczek's property, how much distance was there from those targets to his property? I think that was one of the questions, wasn't it? How much, how much distance there was there to your property? I didn't, I didn't know far, maybe that wasn't understood as what he was asking. That's what I, I got from it anyway.
Well, we, we've gone over extensively about, for the last couple hours, and there's nothing really further to add on that, aside from we're in compliance with the law. I mean, we've, we haven't. I, I understand you're asking where.
Is it on the property line, or is there 50 feet behind the targets, or 100 feet behind the target? That's all, that's all the question.
It, I just, I don't believe it's relevant for your consideration. We're talking about the sheds here.
So on the major overall site, I'm actually looking at the plan, I'm assuming you have a copy or one or two, just because we've had a list of numerous plots, what plot number would encompass the actual platforms that you have submitted in your application?
If, any application didn't need some data parcel map, it's up in the.
Well, this is, this is just the certified list of the butters, it's here, so you're looking at number six.
This one right here, that's six. Six.
Where is there five in this direction towards the?
Thank you, just want to clarify, we're looking at.
That's helpful. That's, I remember this.
Is there a buffer zone between the targets to shoot at and his property?
Yes. Is it south? Oh, it's, it's this way, northward.
My own experience where we always had a nice big buffer behind the targets, so the bullets went into the water instead of to his property.
Right.
It also got nothing to do with the building.
Just a question into, into the range, just curious on the, the noise dampening material that's being used, because I know you said it was a rigid, or?
Yes, it's a certainty product number, I can give you the number of it, but it's a identity fiberglass panel. We, we actually got that information from another club that uses it. We did our research to try to find the best material that we could find and look at it for.
And thank you, that's what I wanted to know, is if you had any type of correspondence with anybody else?
Yes, yes, yes.
Used it, that, that good results, bad results? A rigid one wouldn't be something I would think would absorb the sound. I think it would bounce more than using a softer material that would absorb. Kind of if you were in a sound deadening room, you would actually have more, it's like a corkboard that absorbs the sound, so.
Yes, I thought the same thing, too, but the gentleman that I spoke to from another range in Connecticut, they tried the Omisole, didn't work as well as the panels.
Okay. Thank you for answering.
Yeah, they, they use it on the ceiling, and they make a J-channel on the walls, that they put it in, and it slides in between like metal. it in, and it slides in between like metal studs, and it works that way.
Maybe it's in here, and I'm sorry if I'm asking a question that's right before me. Do you know what material, the door material, because the doors are going to be in an upward position, correct? In front and back, so therefore the sound dampening material that's up above, as a ceiling board, will not be as effective. What are the doors constructed of? Do they have an insulation?
Right now, they're metal. They are metal doors, but we could work on that. It's a concern.
That's something that --
We're willing to work on that.
Because, yes, obviously, an insulated material that would dampen the sound would be a better material.
Yeah. I'm sure that could be written. It's just a change what size spring you would need to open it by making the door.
Please bear with us for a moment.
No problem.
Do you have any questions?
I really don't. My only concern is just where the public is. I just don't feel that I know. And we are -- our focus is now to really address the building of these sheds, but it's important to me as to where they're located on the property. And I just don't feel I quite have a clear space. So that's my only concern.
Oh, we --
Do you have any questions?
We have no problem. Just a quick question. Do you know what the elevation of the upper shed is to the road? What the elevation is?
From the road?
Yeah.
I don't have that.
One question I had for the access of the property, and this was brought up by you as for safety, for road access that goes up in. And I ask for your forgiveness on this one, forgetting whether it was right on your site or on a Facebook or websites. It actually talked about the access to the shooter shed, the upper one, that it was a combination lock?
Yes, we had that gated.
And they were concerned about the fact that people would be giving out the combination and sneaking up to that upper area. So that's the concern, that within your own thing, how would you regulate it? As during construction or other -- do you have another plan?
Right now, anybody who shoots from the upper area is, in a sense, a range officer for that upper area, okay? Anybody that's up there without going through our --
Long-range orientation.
The orientation program that we have in place, or we'll throw them out of the club.
But they also have a tag.
Please not address them.
Right, he is right, though.
You may address me. Please don't cross. You may. You may tell me what you want to say.
They have a tag on their membership badge stating that they are certified to shoot there. And if they're not there, they're out of there. We never have that option.
So that's if somebody else from the club sees them and --
We are working our way toward an electronic key gate, so we know who's coming in, who's going out. But due to unforeseen circumstances beyond our control, we can't do that at the moment. It isn't our long-range plan. We want it sooner than later.
Good, yeah, I've been approached before about saving concerns and that answer.
We do want it sooner than later, and right now, I don't believe that anybody that would shoot up on the long range or up from a top would give their combination to anybody else. I don't believe that they're a pack of people that would let people scan.
Another quick question. Do you guys plan to run power out?
This time? Not right now. I mean, you know, we were talking, you said about lights. We could work at, you know, some solar stuff if need be. I mean, we'll definitely address the situation if it's dark. We don't want it to be anything like that. And we talked about bringing power up from Chickaby Street up the hill to the thing. We've talked about that, but again, it's, we've got to put a few things behind us first before we can keep going.
That is a great solution. Absolutely. No, sir, I'm sorry. At this time, I'm not asking for any more input from the audience. This is a board with -- No, sir. Thank you. Do you have any more questions?
I just wanted to reiterate a past point that was made. Like I said, we invite you to come visit the property if you need to. I mean, it's open for the board to view and to see exactly where the proposed structures are going to be.
I would point out, if that were to happen, I would not close the hearing in order to take it. Closing the hearing, then, I think that closes --
Any other evidence.
-- any other evidence, so that there would have to be some agreement to keep the hearing open.
Continue it.
To continue the hearing.
It's up to them.
So I need to actually know, then, from the board, whether you would feel comfortable with going forward and doing a site visit in lieu of actually having a site plan?
I have a site visit.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, I think there would have to be a vote to continue the hearing with the agreement
of the applicant pursuant to the statute. Attorney Rafelson and I can reduce that in writing again, but it would have to be continued to a certain date and time. Vote one, for the site visit, and then two, to reconvene the hearing here.
To vote. So it would be a site visit and then come back here to vote?
Deliberate.
Well, I believe they would have to come back into an actual open session in order to reopen the hearing, and if the board so chose at that point to then close the hearing, to then deliberate, so then the 90-day clock for a decision and filing of the decision and the detailed findings of the proceedings. So, and I'd also note that the, that at least notice of the site visit would have to be conformed with the open meeting law as well, in terms of notice requirements.
So that means that you would have to allow public --
There are, well, I'm not quite sure about that. I don't, I would have to go back and review, but I don't think that is the case. But I think it would be appropriate after the site visit. There is provisions in the open meeting law for site visits. There are limitations upon what you, as a board, can discuss while at the site visit, until you come back here in a, again, previously noticed pursuant to the open meeting law, and to discuss what you saw, found at that, during that site visit, I think would not, you know, if not only required by the open meeting law, would be appropriate, given the circumstances. So I think we need to continue the open, the hearing for two separate dates.
Could it be done on, could you try to do it on one date? We've done it in another state in one date, where they went to the site, saw the, and we took small groups of people who wanted to see, at a time, to be able to just go up and look, and they were brought back. They were accompanied and taken up and brought back off the site, so that there wasn't a big crowd of people on the site at any one time. And then we reconvened at a public meeting spot to reopen the hearing and then close it.
Yes, certainly my concern is more the DBA, as opposed to other members I'm more concerned, or other members of the community. It's been a while since site visits have occurred with some of these boards here. I think, I think it would be appropriate for the board, after the site visit, to come back to an open meeting here to discuss, so that members of the community --
Can be here.
-- can be here and can ask questions and give their input. I believe that's what the open meeting law envisions when allowing for these site visits, that they aren't just a site visit, you come back and then close the hearing and don't even discuss the site visit. I think if it doesn't violate the letter, I think it would violate the spirit of the open meeting law.
And if it could be done on the same day, that would make it less expensive for everyone to try to come on two separate dates, if we could just drop.
I think that would depend upon the board's ability to, at this point, one, knowing, not knowing everyone's occupation, and all four of you would have to attend. Otherwise, then, we have an issue of a member not being present at a public hearing, and since we have four members of a five-member board, that would determine the application by operational law. So I think, it has to be done tonight. We can't be continuing this generally. I think the board has to. If they're going to take advantage of the opportunity, they have to come up with a set date, time, and location. Location for the site visit is set, but certainly the, whether or not, again, we reconvene the same day, but at 6 o'clock again back here. So we would actually set up two meetings and a continuation of the hearing. I think that's how we have to do it.
Have any recommendations from board members as to available date possible? And we have to make sure that we are even to commit to it, as Mr. Otua said, because we need all four members to be there.
I'm going to go on Tuesday, any Tuesday.
Tuesdays?
Tuesdays. Time we, earliest possible, I could do is four --
I think the sooner would be the --
Yeah, yes.
Is the best.
Tuesday, I possibly do next Tuesday. Anybody have the 30th available?
Does that give enough time to notice legally?
May 7th is not a problem.
May 7th?
Yes. I think we have to give Ms. Leonard --
Time.
-- time to get all the requisite notices. I think the open meeting law requires 48 hours' notice, but --
May 7th works for me. This is Tuesday, 7. Yeah.
Do you guys want to do 5:00?
Yeah, we set the day, time.
5:00 PM this time?
I can make myself available. I can make myself available, and I don't even necessarily have to be there.
5:00 PM?
Yeah. Nothing, I'll get on my calendar and make sure.
Make sure and call me.
Then we reconvene here at 6:00.
Why don't we give 6:30 to give time to come back?
Yeah. And we'll have to confirm that this is available to --
Attorney Otua, you'll work out whatever the arrangements are and what we have to talk against, just to make sure that --
Well, I think --
You need us to do.
Yeah. This is where, this is where, this is where it becomes an issue, because we cannot leave here to a undetermined or estimated time under 40A or the open meeting law. Otherwise, we risk. So, I mean, if we're going for a 5:00, if we're going for a 5:00 PM site visit, unless you guys are doing a drive-by of it, I don't know that that is going to give you adequate time to be back here for 6:00 or 6:30 or --
Should we make it at 4:00? Can we do 4:00?
I can do 4:00. Can you do 4:00?
I might get work. Yeah.
How about 4:30?
That'd be better. 4:30 would be better. I know the location's only, what, 15 minutes from here, if that? So it shouldn't take us long.
Then here for 6:30?
Here for 6:30.
So we take it as a vote from the board, that is what we're going to accept?
As a vote from the board and acknowledgement from the applicant that they are in agreement with that, and that Attorney Rafelson and I will reduce that to writing if the board would authorize me to sign that on behalf of the board, and Attorney Rafelson on behalf of his client.
Okay, so I'm making a motion, excuse me, that on May 7th at 4:30 PM, we will do a site visit of Granby Bow and Gun Club. All members of the board to be present at that time for an open meeting at that location. We will then follow up at 6:30 PM at this location, West Street, to have the continuation of the hearing.
Correct.
So we are keeping the hearing open at this time. May I have a second on that motion?
My second.
Okay. All in favor?
You read your hearing, too.
Oh, I did.
Oh, you did.
Sorry. All in favor, oh, I'm sorry.
All right. And again, this is the horse contingent upon, and you will write it out. And at this time, I'm just making a motion that we grant Mr. Otua as our legal representative to be able to sign the agreement with the attorneys to be, that we will be meeting on that date. Second motion?
I'll second it.
Second? All in favor?
All right.
So you have our permission to, as our attorney in that matter, sign?
Attorney, I'll use basically the same form that we've used in the past to continue the hearing.
For any audience that could not hear that or understand that at this time, so on May 7th, this zoning board of appeals will continue with a site visit at 4:30 PM over at the Granby Bow and Gun Club, at which time all members must be present to do the site visit. We will then reconvene here at 6:30 PM that evening, following the site visit, to continue the hearing.
Are members of the public allowed to be there?
Because we need to have control over what's going, who's going in and out, and how.
I think it would be just the board.
Yeah, that's why I don't know. Being a technically open meeting if it's, please give us a moment to look at this.
I'm going to try and get the open meeting law up.
If it's easier to solve it by allowing it that way, we would just ask that people park where they're told to be parked, and that nobody leave their vehicle until they're asked, and that they be taken in groups of five by a couple of people who will accompany them up to look around, if they are allowed, and then accompanied back to their cars to leave, and that nobody be allowed to just walk around the site?
Yeah, supervised.
So people would be given numbers or something, and they come in and will take them up in batches? Yeah, and a limited amount of time per group going up to look?
Okay. 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 Okay.
So at this time, I would make a motion, excuse me, to close this meeting of the zoning board of appeals.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is closed.